Starting with stop.
There we go, okay.
All right, so welcome everybody, sorry for the delay. I like to call this meeting to order, this is the town of Maynard zoning board of appeals, we're holding this meeting remote. And I see that we have a whole bunch of people here in the audience, as well as us, board members. And the first item is the minutes, we have two sets of minutes to approve. I assume everybody's read them, April minutes, any comments?
How about, well, how well edited they were or something, I don't know.
There was, there was one typo in there.
All right.
On the top of the third page, they flipped some words around. The and instead of, it should be and the.
And which, which, I'm sorry, which was that, Paul?
That's April, top of the third page, first paragraph or so.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Anything else? Accurate rendition of what we did in April, if you can remember back that far? So, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
As amended, I hope.
As amended, yes.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All right, now we're gonna do a roll call, Brad? Yes, Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Leslie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so April passes. The May minutes. We had a chance to review those, I hope. Any comments? Accurate is transcribed? I need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the May twenty second minutes.
Excellent. A roll call, Brad?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, that administrivia under control, now we can get into the real stuff. Public hearing, six Glendale streets continued from the May meeting, which was continued from the April meeting. The ZBA will consider an application submitted by Joanna Morelles, two nineteen Bishop Drive, Framingham, Mass, oh one seven oh two. The subject property, six Glendale Street, Maynard, Mass, oh one seven five four, is a pre-existing non-conforming structure located in the business zoning district. The subject property's current use is as an auto detailing shop, the applicant is proposing the use of auto repair. Because the structure of, on the property, is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage and setbacks. A finding by the ZPA is required per section five point one point two in protective zoning bylaws. That the proposed use of an auto repair shop would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And as I recall from the April meeting where we had most of the discussion, we left it that we needed clarification as to what the auto repair shop will be doing. Because there was discussion of other activities going on for that business as well. And so, do we have Joanna here to describe that and what this auto repair shop will be so it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Uh, yes, I'm here. So, aside from what we were talking about in April, we had just went back down to just a repair shop. We're going to postpone and hold off on what we were saying about the rental, just because it got very confusing and then there's more entailed to the whole rental portion of it than we expected, so we said we're just gonna wait and then we'll come back to the zoning board if we need to for that portion. But, for the repair shop, it's going to be a normal repair shop that you go to Jarmo's or Christmas Motors, where like we do the brakes, the tires, oil changes, just like the maintenance of a vehicle. But, we also help body shops, like just prep cars. So like just sanding them down so it can be ready for paint. Just so we can move the car over to a body shop to paint it. But, that's pretty much, I can't give you more detail on a repair shop, because if you guys have a car, y'all know what a repair shop does. Like if you have a broken mirror, you get the mirror replaced, if you need an oil change, because you've gone over three thousand miles, you bring it in, or it's every three months. If your brakes need to be changed, the pad, the paddings or the rotors are dull, you bring it in. So I, I guess really what you guys are looking for is, is how we're going to make that repair shop not disrupt the way of living around the the area that we're asking to put our shop in. So with that, like the noises, we, we will try to do the bare minimum, but we're gonna be working during working hours, so most people are already out of the house working. During the summer, we might just extend the hours, but we're not gonna go like super late, we probably work till seven, just because it's still daylight out. And for smells and oil and everything, we will make sure that there is no chemical spillage, or we'll clean it up with the proper stuff to clean, to, because I know with, there'll be oil spills, because that's what happens when you do oil changes or you fix a car that's broken. I just want, I guess more of your questions and concerns, and then I can roll off that to give you an answer.
All right, so to have the voting people for this particular case. Brad, you sat out on the April discussion, is that right? And so I think you're sitting out again for this one. That leaves Paige, Jerry, John, Leslie and myself as the voting members for this case. So of those four besides me, any questions? Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, a question for the owner, that is, you mentioned prepping, you know, sanding and prepping for bodywork, for future painting. Do you mean, in the context that that sanding and prepping would all be done at this shop? Or would that be done at your other shop down the street? I, I may have missed what you said.
The sanding would be done inside, indoors. We will have a vent place, so it, like a vacuum vent, so it doesn't create any dust or anything that will leave the building. But yeah, we'd be prepping the vehicles, so when we bring it to another shop that has a paint booth, we don't take much time of the mechanics that own that shop to just get everything done.
Okay, and I, I guess that the exhaust system you're gonna be putting in, I don't know what code approvals are required, I'm not in that, I'm in the safety business, but not in that portion of it. Just to make sure that, it, you know, it, it's a true dust collector, that it's actually truly absorbing everything it's supposed to, and isn't just a fan system that.
Yeah, we would be placing like one of the industrial air vacuums that you would see in any shop. Because I'm sure that there's other mechanical things that would create dust, not just sanding, so we would need it placed, but before we can put anything in this building, we need approval by you guys, by the zoning board. So then we can ask the landlord, I've already spoken with the owner of this property, and he is willing to make any changes that we need to make to make this building zone zone approved. But we don't wanna make any changes right now, it, it gets denied, because that we'd be wasting a lot of money for. But we won't be putting like, something that you find at Walmart for your personal house vacuum, we'd be putting an industrial one.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Leslie, you were gonna have something?
Oh, yeah, I'm just wondering how you're going to deal with the fact that in the summertime, it's gonna get really hot and you're gonna wanna have the door open. Are you gonna always have the doors shut when the work is being done and so therefore it'll be air conditioned, or how will you deal with that?
We are in the process of buying the industrial ACs, but depending on the work that we're gonna be doing, we'll have the doors open, but if it contains like an oil change, we can have the doors open. There's really no smell for that, so anything that contains like this odor, we'll have the door shut with the ventilation. But with this hot hour, like with the hot days, most likely the doors will be open until those ACs have been placed. But we make sure that it's not gonna disrupt anyone around us, like from noise to smell to what it looks like. Because the garages are very deep, so you can fit at least two cars in each garage. So, it won't be a nuisance, I guess.
And how much noise does the sanding create?
It's just like, we mostly have sandpaper that we use, but if you ever use like a sander to redo furniture, it's, that's how loud it is. It's not like this big, big booming sound that would bother anyone.
By the way, I'm outdoors and it's thundering, so if I go running in the house, just wait a minute. Okay, so, so some of it's gonna be done by hand, that's quiet, and then others, it's a sanding machine. So, will the doors be shut so there isn't a lot of noise while the?
When it's standing, we're gonna have the door shut, so the ventilation, the vacuum would be sucking up all the dust from it. We're not gonna have the door open, because then you're creating the problem of having all that dust from the car, from sanding, to blow out and then into the air. So that's why we, when sanding like, with the sander, like the electric sander, we'd have the door shut. But if it's like a corner, like for example, it's like a small area. The door might be open and we might just sand that little area, and then it'll be done. But when we're prepping a vehicle, the doors are gonna be shut.
So I know other people have had concerns about tow trucks coming down the street, because the street is already narrow and do you have some comments about that?
I believe we discussed this the last time. I think the concern was because we had two tow trucks dropping off family vehicles, like around eight or one time it was like, like nine, almost ten o'clock at night, but during the day, they come into the parking lot, they don't just sit in front of the street, because it's a one-way street, and it's very narrow. So they'll, they'll be coming in to drop off the vehicle, they're not gonna drop it off in the middle of the road, so we won't be causing too much traffic.
And how many vehicles do you anticipate having in the yard at any given time?
So I believe we calculated about fifteen cars total, I could be off, because I don't remember exactly, but we had did the map of how many cars, we can do two cars, but I don't believe that we're going to have a lot of cars sitting in our parking lot, if they're for oil changes or anything that's just a day service. The cars that we'll have sitting in our parking lot will just only be the cars that are either needing to be fixed for major mechanical, like engine or transmission, or if it needs to be prepped for the other, for the collision center to be painted.
Thanks, Paige or John?
I, I do have a question, or sort of, it might be a two-part question. Outside of customers, and I'm only thinking this because I just had my car serviced. Deliveries, I expect you'll be getting deliveries for parts and things. Are you expecting any off-hour deliveries or anything that might be coming on, like a tractor trailer or something like that?
No, the vendors that we work with work during normal hours, like the eight to five. If there was any deliveries for parts, it would be like a FedEx. Excuse me, sorry, it would be FedEx or like a UPS, something like you would be getting delivered at your house. Other than that, for those big engines or transmissions, you, it won't be between eight and five.
I'm good, thank you.
Paige?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, you mentioned that there may be some prepping of cars at this location and the sanding prior to them being transferred off-site to, to be painted. How would those cars be transported to the body shop, would they be driven by their owners or would they be towed?
We would drive them, but they would obviously be, there would either be a dealer plate with, from the shop that we're using, or it'd be with the plate of the customer. So we wouldn't be driving without like any non-plates. But most of it, they're all drivable.
And they wouldn't be towed or on a truck or anything like that, okay, thank you.
All set?
Yep, thank you.
I've got a few notes, questions that I'd like to bounce off of you, Joanna. When you say you're prepping a car for painting, how far down the road does that go? Does that include putting the epoxy on and sanding that down, so all they have to do is put paint on in the body shop, or you're gonna let them put the epoxy on?
So we're just sanding, literally just sanding and then making sure that there's tape around the window, like around the edges of the windows, and then when you get it to the paint, that's when they put the rest of the stuff on, from the hardener to the activators or the reduce, whatever it is that they do with the paint. So we're just sanding it for prepping, we're not doing anything that has to do with chemicals.
When you're doing your auto repair, is that including an air wrench?
Is that including a what?
Air wrench, you know, one of those big nasty loud bang 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 wrenches?
No, I don't think we even own one of those, I know we all like, for the sock, for the lug nuts.
Yeah, that kind of a style, yeah, thank you.
Yes, but that would be during working hours, it wouldn't be early in the morning or after hours. But we don't use that, I don't believe we use that as often, because I don't even hear it. And I'm upstairs in the office, and I can hear everything that happens down below me or next door.
So that brings up my next question, that building, as I, as I see it, has a second floor, what happens on the second floor?
So the second floor is the office. So if people wanna wait, they can wait in the there's, so there's three, on the second floor, there's three rooms, the middle section upstairs is where the employees eat and they can, because there's like a small kitchen. And where I am sitting right now is, there's a small office, and then outside of the room is a bigger room with a bathroom and like a partial kitchen, it's just a refrigerator and a sink. But that's where the customers can sit and wait if they're just getting an oil change or tire or anything that's like a day service.
So there's, there's no residential unit up there?
No.
Okay. Waste management, a big deal, waste oil, waste whatever.
We have to pick up the oil, so there is a company that we use, that we have, that come and pick up the old oil, and then we obviously have our dumpster trash company that comes and picks up the trash. So we won't be leaving any oil remnants anywhere, and we're very careful because it being a fire hazard as well.
I know when I drop my car off, I like to do it the night before, are you gonna allow somebody to come in and drop their car off and somebody else drive them away?
At this time, no, because we don't have a secure lockbox for any keys, and even though it's near maybe a safe town, it's just best that we don't let customers just drop their vehicles off and leave the keys in the car.
Okay, parking, on your original application for this special permit, you mentioned that the employees are gonna park somewhere else.
I don't know the.
Plan or not?
Um, so the, the parking, the public parking across from the movie theater? We just have them parked there for now. Just because at this time, we don't really know what it's gonna look like if we get approved for to have a shop here with the cars in the parking lot. And we don't wanna take up the side part on the side street. Just because if cars or other people who are just going to the library and the library is full, they can park on the street. So we just have, we only have three employees, minus plus me, so there's four of us and we just park. I don't, what is called the parking lot? Across from where the I don't know the name. Right off of it's like a big public parking lot.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're talking. As I recall from the April discussion, the building commissioner frowned on that idea.
Um, man. Okay, regarding the parking, because this is in the downtown overlay district, which is why we're going through a lot of this, the the concept of shared parking, it has been embraced in past decisions primarily by the planning board downtown. So in this case, is it's a relatively modest number of employees, and there's available public parking during business hours. That would be typical in the DOD to allow for off-site parking, the use of, of public parking, in fact, that's one of the objectives of the downtown overlay district and the second thing, just to, may Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, we probably, or I should have probably mentioned this earlier. This is the first of two permits that will be required if the board is inclined to grant this, and this is really not a permit so much as it is a, a a, a finding that the, the use would not be more detrimental, and then this would move to the planning board. And just to, to, to kind of lay out how this could work, the, the board would be at this point evaluating conditions that we could provide as part of a further permit, as recommendations for a further permit. But, so that's what I would recommend, you know, that Mr. Chair would be the most helpful tonight.
Right, right, as, as I read the announcement, I said, you know, would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Exactly.
What we're doing here in our various questions is to try to figure out what the detriments might be.
Oh, absolutely, and I, and I think that's a big help, and what we'll do is, anything that, when the board does make their finding, pro or con, or whatever it is, we will list the, what was considered detrimental and potential mitigation for that, if that board feels it's appropriate. But I just wanted to make clear on the parking for the DOD, that is not something that is unusual.
Bill, can I just clarify that, the staff report says it's in the business zoning district, is it also on the, the overlay, I didn't see reference to that?
That's correct, the underlying zoning is business.
Business, okay.
However, the, and this is being, this uses falls under a business district. However, for, because geographically it's under the downtown overlay district, which is kind of, you know, another layer on top. So, for the parking reductions, if there are public, if there's public parking nearby, it's consistent with the zoning bylaws to allow parking. All the other issues you're talking about are absolutely, I would say, you know, there's something that, that the board wants to work through, but in my opinion, or by recommendation, is that DOD parking for employees or, or and that doesn't mean, to be clear, that doesn't mean that a damaged vehicle or something like that, I'm talking about somebody that's utilizing as a temporary basis to go visit a business, we do that with other businesses in the area. I hope that was helpful.
Oh, it is, it is. As, as I was moving my set of questions forward, the one that is unknown to me right now is the current use as an auto detailing shop. Do we have any information as to what kind of neighborhood impact the detailing shop had? As far as number of cars and, and what they were doing?
Is that question for me, Mr. Chair?
If Joanna can't answer it, then yes.
I don't, I only know that there was a detailing shop, I don't know, I know that the only thing I did know about detailing shop was the only problem that the town had with them is that they didn't have a drain in place for the water to go into, and prior to moving into this building, the owner put that drain in. So if, because one of the things is we would like to use as a detail shop, but that's already zoned here, so we just kept it out, we're just trying to get the repair shop part. And go with the planning board. If we're approved today for the zoning, both were to the planning board to get approved for the detailing shop.
All right, the last question I have is, you, you were talking maybe up to fifteen cars in that parking lot? How are you gonna deal with snow removal?
Uh, we'll do shoveling and then we have a four-wheeler that we use to pick up the bigger parts.
All right. Any other questions of the board members? I love it, the silence is deafening. Jerry, did you have any other questions?
Want to find a mute button? No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this particular public hearing? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to this particular public hearing? I, whoa, wait a minute, one at a time, Mary Jo, I saw your hand first. You're still on mute.
Okay, I don't know if it's so much opposition as questioning. Can I ask how much of, of this work is gonna be collision work as opposed to like people coming in with their cars? How much of it are, are cars that you're bringing in to, to fix up so that you can you know, bring them then to get painted?
Are you, I don't really know, it all depends on who needs to get their car fixed. Because sometimes we get cars, like, there's a dealership in California that buys cars from Massachusetts and uses us to like get the cars ready to go back to California, but it could be one a week, two a week, it all really depends on who needs it, and then there are people who just get in like little fender benders that come to us.
Again, that's, that's bodywork though, right, fender benders is bodywork.
It's bodywork, but we're not doing a lot of the bodywork because we have a body shop Somewhere else and they're gonna be mostly bodywork. We're just doing more mechanic work. So like engine transmission, oil changes, brake changes and prepping cars. So if. The body shop, if it's a car that we have, if we have to just change a bumper, we're gonna change a bumper. But it's not gonna be like, if the whole front end of the car is damaged, it's no good. We just send it back to um. Wherever the dealership bought it.
So you're, just if I, sorry, Mary Jo, I got a little confused on that one. So these are not personal cars? These are business cars you're repairing?
This is a dealership. So it's one of, one of our customers is the dealership. But we also work with person, like people who are personally needing us to fix their car. So you know how there are companies who have like accounts, like we have an account with Case Transportation? And we do their mechanic work. We have a dealership that we work with in Concord to get cars ready. But I can't say for sure how mu- how many cars are coming with like damage. So I guess I should be asking. Like what, what do you need? What are you asking for? How many cars are gonna be damaged like to?
Well, I guess I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the auto body part of it and what, what the sanding. I, I, and I guess I'm concerned about, you know, environmental impact with, with that. Because I, and I have a daycare, I have little kids and I would just wanna make sure that, you know, things will be safe for them and for the kids. There's, you know, it's, it's a. Yeah, I know it's owned as business, but you know, we have, you know, families and then we have the library. But there's a lot of children involved in the area and I just wanna make sure that it's. It would be something that would be safe.
Well, as I.
And also.
Go ahead.
Yeah, whether the Department of Environmental Protection would say that it was safe for kids.
Yes, as I previously mentioned earlier today, we, if we are zoned to be able to do this. We will have an industrial, purchase an industrial vacuum. So when all this is happening, it's indoors and we're not. Cause we know you're next door and we wanna make sure you're safe and the kids are safe. But we're not gonna have the doors open if we're standing. If it's like a s- small spot there with sanding, you're not gonna get anything in, in the air. But if it's like a big job, it's gonna be behind closed doors with the ventilators and the vacuum. So it's taking all the dust out. So it's not. Once we open the doors, it's not gonna go out into the air.
Is that okay, Mary Jo? You all set?
Um, well, I think some parents have some other questions, so.
I, I agree, but I wanted to catch your, yours first, cause you seem to have the quickest hand.
Okay, I might have somewhere later, but I'm okay right now.
All right, thank you. Uh, who's next? Uh, Craig?
Not even muted. I thought I was muted. Um, yeah, so I, I guess like I'm, I'm, I'm parent at um, Mary Jo's daycare and, and uh, my family also frequents the library and. Um, yeah, I, I think Mary Jo articulated some of my concerns and um, I guess the, the specific question that I have for you, Joanna, um, is that. The, the first I, I learned about this was that Mary Jo, um, and I don't mean to. Call you out, Mary Jo, but you know, sh- shared that um, one day while the daycare was operating, there was a chemical smell in the air. Um, and she felt the need to bring the kids inside um, and called you about that and, and that you were very responsive and, and um, quickly. Stopped doing whatever was causing that, that chemical smell um, in, in response. But I guess like I, I'm just uh, like confused and concerned about what, what, what that chemical smell was. If you can share. You know, what, what, what caused that smell and um, are there plans like, you know, work? And that was, that smell was caused as you were operating as a detail shop or um, and, and will those chemicals be used as your detail and? Repair shop or um. Yeah, and what, what mitigation measures, if any, you can put up. And I guess like honestly, my, my concern is that if, if that smell was already there. Before you're approved for all this additional work, like, you know. Yeah, are there gonna be a lot more smells like that after the board authorizes this where maybe then instead of being as responsive and, and. You know, stopping of that activity because you wanna get the permit, you'll just say, well, really sorry, but we have jobs to do. We have cars to repair. And this smell is part of doing business and, and meanwhile, our kids are, are breathing in whatever those chemicals are that I'm not familiar with. Um, so that, that's really my concern. I, I don't know if that um, makes sense, but yeah, we, we appreciate your response to that.
Yeah, but that day, what it was is um, it was undercoating and they were using um. A, like a spray gun machine to do the undercoating, but they, we had to speak to the employee because he didn't know that we weren't supposed to be using it. Um, cause he was fixing his car and what it was, it was his car, like underneath it was rusting. And you gotta fix the rust, you gotta weld and make sure that the rust doesn't eat away all the rest of the bottom of the car. So once you fix all that, you have to do an undercoating. So then it stops um. So like everything matches and it doesn't like wear again from the rain. And so it's like a protected protector. So what happened was that day he was using the spray gun and he didn't realize that it was getting off, giving off an odor and it was going into Mary Jo's yard. So she called me and told me what was going on and then I went and I addressed it. So then they stopped it. Um, I guess in any case, I can't tell you in the future that you might not smell something. Because we're, it's still like a learning game. Like if the moment you smell something. You can call me and just say, hey, this is what I smell. Can you like, I'll figure out because. I don't know if it's gonna be coming from downstairs. Work is coming from somewhere else. Because Jarmos is not too far from here and I know that they've been working there for years and we're new. So you're gonna smell like all different things, but. So we can learn what we need to change. It's best if you do what Mary Jo did. Just call me. I will answer. I will address the problem if. Um, if there's like a major problem that like that day with the undercoating and the employee. Uh, or if there's louder noises or if there's something that's um. Needs to be changed.
So if I, if I can summarize that, Joanna, is. You're, you're doing what you wanna do. And if there is a problem, you let the neighbors tell you there's a problem rather than. You following best business practices from the beginning.
No, 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 that's not, that is not what I'm saying at all. That, that is completely on a, out of context. I was saying is. At this moment, I can do my very best to keep every odor, every noise, everything. Swoosh and compress so it doesn't bother anyone, but I can't say for sure that they're not gonna smell something. If they do. Then if they address it and let me know, I can correct the problem because it could be that the employee left the door open. And I can, and it's like in any business, you can tell an employee fifty times not to do something, but one day they're gonna forget it. So that's what I'm saying is if there is a problem, just to address it to me so I can correct it. I'm not trying to do whatever I want because. Then it's pointless of me sitting here and trying to get the permits if I'm gonna do whatever I want. I wanna but go based on what. You guys approve of and um, do it correctly so we can be your. Running business and help people, but I'm just thinking of the future. There, there are going to be. Things that happen that um, I can try to control, but if like I'm not here in the office and there is a problem. It, but I'm not un- unaware of it. I can't, I can't correct it. So like the day that my employee is fixing his car, I didn't realize there was an order that was carrying over there. Because I wasn't even in the office.
So the point, the point that I'm trying to say here. Is that if those employees had been trained in how to use the chemicals that have a vapor issue. Then there would not have been a vapor issue leaving the site. But by going in and correcting everything after the fact, says that you could have a major mistake. And have some real nasties get out into the atmosphere because, you know, you were trying to do it and then when you get caught, then you fix it. You wanna do it with a training program ahead of time to make sure that the odors don't leave the facility and they're captured appropriately. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you though.
My apologies. It sounded like you were saying that I was trying to do whatever I want, which is not the key. Uh, all our employees have been trained. We're also used to not being around any other businesses that um. Like other residential areas. This is the first time that we are dealing with residential people. And we're also used to having a bigger space. So if we have the doors open, it doesn't carry out like it did here. So I'm not trying to, you know, diminish what happened with my employee because he wasn't the wrong there. There's no doubt about that. And I'm not trying to say that um, everyone here is. Very un um, like who doesn't know what they're doing. We all know that there are protocols. Um, and I'm not trying to say that I'm gonna fix every problem that happens. I'm just saying that there's. In the mechanic business, there's a lot of things and we're still getting used to this building and seeing what we can do to change it. So then it doesn't happen again.
All right, thank you. We have some more hands up. Uh, Danny, I think you're next.
Thank you so much. Um, hi, my name's Danny Schisler. I live at thirty Parker Street with my wife and my daughter. Um, my daughter Ren uh, goes to Mary Jo's daycare. Uh, she is there two days a week. Mary Jo takes the kids out. I'm sure many of you know. Walks up and down the sidewalk with them, takes them to the park, to the library. Um, they use that street and we're very grateful that we're able to have her in a daycare where she can enjoy outdoor spaces and visit these wonderful public places. Um, that Maynard goes to great lengths to uh, to keep very nice and open for, for our town. Um, everything I'm hearing uh, so far. Um, is telling me that there are only detrimental impacts. Uh, if this business is permitted here, um, I'm not seeing any benefits to the community. Uh, it sounds like there's going to be significant increase of traffic with large vehicles, tow trucks potentially twenty, thirty times a day. Going down a very narrow street, turning uh, in a narrow curb cut into a parking lot. Uh, this is a street that people use, people from an environmental justice community to reach critical commercial and cultural areas in the center of town. So to me, there's already a safety issue and pedestrians and bicyclists trying to make their way into town with just the increased amount of traffic on a residential side street. Then you have all the environmental issues that we've already been discussing. Uh, from what I heard in the beginning of this meeting, it sounded like spraying and spray coatings were not gonna be used. And now I'm hearing that spray coatings have been used. Not only that, it sounds like the pro- project proponent is wholly unequipped to deal with. Uh, spills and uh, air pollution caused by spray coatings. I'm sure many people here know that spray coatings are heavily regulated at a state and federal level. For the very reason, because they can escape so easily into, into the air and contaminate uh, the air for uh, residents and children going down the sidewalk. Um, so will there be spray coatings used uh, in this building? It sounds like they have a spray gun and they have employees who have used them before because. If there will be, I would wanna know that you're meeting EPA and MAST DEP requirements for spray coatings, which includes. All kinds of uh, of building uh, and, and ventilation requirements, including. Uh, I believe an exhaust stack that rises well above uh, the roof line. And I think that is uh, certainly non-conforming just from looking at the building. Uh, so if there are spray coatings used, I would wanna have guarantees that um, there was proper air filtration in place. Um, but beyond that, all of the other environmental concerns. Uh, are flammable materials being stored there? Um, I would think almost certainly. And is there a flammable storage permit? And has Maynard Fire Department reviewed this proposal? Um, without adequate setbacks behind the building, if I live behind the building, I'd be in this meeting right now saying, what if there's a fire? With flammable material, can the fire department reach it? And what is the risk to me? Is, is it being stored properly? Is that, is that being inspected? Um, as it should be hazardous waste, is hazardous waste being generated? Almost certainly. Uh, has that been registered with MAST DEP and are there regular inspections? Those are all requirements of having hazardous waste on site. Is there underground or above ground storage tanks on site? Well, if they have oil and they're changing oil, then they most certainly are. And I would wanna know that MAST DEP is regularly inspecting. Those tanks. I'm a facilities manager. I deal with underground tanks and we are out there every week inspecting these things, getting them repaired and we're working with the, with MAST DEP to make sure that. Uh, there is no groundwater contamination or human hazard. Um, occupational hazard. There is so much occupational hazard when you're dealing with spray booths or with hazardous materials. So I would wanna know that you're conforming to all the regulations there. So these are all environmental concerns. And when you say that the building has a drain, I'm also thinking, well, is there oil-water separation going on here? Uh, what does that mean exactly? A drain? Um, are, is there groundwater contamination happening with sanding, wash down with any uh, chemicals that are being used? As you said. There are spills that frequently happen. How are you mitigating uh, all of those negative impacts on our groundwater and uh, the surrounding landscape? Because I'm assuming there's sheet flow from your parking lot and leaking oil alone, sheet flowing off of a parking lot can easily contaminate groundwater. So. Uh, those are other things I'd be worried about. Um, noise impacts, uh, having a, a garage door open with an air wrench going is extremely noisy. And I don't believe for one second that that's not gonna be happening. So I would ask the question of uh. Neighbors, parkgoers, library goers, what will the noise impacts be of an open garage directly across from the library? Uh, that, that to me is not uh, i- is, is likely a potential negative impact. Uh, parking, we discussed uh, a little bit, but what I see here is uh, a business subsidizing employee parking through public parking. So every day we're gonna have multiple spaces that the public cannot utilize in a parking lot uh, that serves all of the downtown. Uh, both employees and customers of other businesses as well as people visiting the park and the library. Um, so the list goes on, but uh, you know, I submitted a comment letter. Uh, I, I hope that that makes clear what my concerns are. But at the minimum, I would wanna know that you're meeting all state, local state and federal regulations for a shop that's dealing with so many hazardous materials and practices. And that's the reason those things are in place to protect all of us, the kids going down the street. And I would say to anyone who smells chemicals outside of a building uh, where industrial processes are happening. The correct call isn't to the building owner. It's to MAST DEP to come out and inspect what, inspect what's going on. So Joanna, I, I would hope that you would be ready for. Uh, dealing with inspections that might occur when people are smelling chemicals um, being emitted by a spray uh. Potentially unlicensed spray boo- booth on your premise. So um, I will um. End it there, but those are my concerns and uh, I hope that the CBA can speak to uh. And the proponent can speak to uh, mitigation of those concerns. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Danny. That was some, some very good comments.
Mr. Chair, may, I just have to tag one thing on if I may about the parking. Because the uh, parking, it uh, none of the other um, remarks by Danny are, are. Have to do with downtown overlay district specifically, but the purpose of the reduced parking reduction. We talked about a subsidy of uh, public parking. This uh, town and, and the zoning bylaws have been adopted to reduce. Need for additional impervious surface. And this is a key aspect to the walkability, the uh, to emphasize walkability in downtown rather than dependency on the vehicle. So I would just remind the board that the zoning bylaws uh, do uh, make use of shared parking in order to. Uh, address environmental as well as um, quality of life concerns for the downtown residents. So I would just put that in. Uh, I think it's a, a critical part as the downtown overlay district is a cr- critical part of our. Uh, zoning that's currently uh, resulting in most of the compact mixed use development that we have occurring. Thanks.
Compact, you mean overcrowded, Bill?
No, I don't. I mean, density, right, density done right. I mean, we're trying to make it so we're not an automobile dependent downtown and we specifically have reduced parking requirements in the downtown with our. Our um, our mixed use projects. Dan, I think Danny would agree with, he understands what I'm basically talking about with that. I don't wanna mix the two. Cause the other, these are very serious issues that Danny's brought up and I, I not at all. Uh.
I, can I just chime in? I, I, I definitely understand uh, the overlay and the intention for the overlay, but. Or, or the, the permitting, I mean, sorry, the parking um, provisions, but. You know, I would ask with a business that has so much impervious surface that they're gonna utilize for their business, could they not use some of that? For their employees. If, if they were deep paving the whole area and, and adding green space and green infrastructure, that would be one thing, but. We're talking about just cramming more cars onto the lot so that they can. We're talking about just cramming more cars onto the lot so that they can make more money, right?
I I totally understand and I I don't wanna divert the conversation, but I'm saying that currently when we have existing businesses. In the downtown, we're faced with parking challenges every day because of the use, and it's it's crucial. That we don't all of a sudden go back to building uh uh, you know, three parking spaces for every residential unit. When we've already gotten abundance of public parking, that was the only thing, I don't wanna uh you know, drag this off and that, but the but the downtown overlay district is something that that. The town and the boards have worked very hard and that's a key part of the parking, so I just ask you to remember that, I.
O- okay, Bill, we can talk more about this offline cuz I have some big opinions too. Before we go much further, I forgot to get where Craig is coming from, Craig, your. Your address, are you in a butter or are you just because you're into the daycare system?
Um, yeah, I'm not in the butter, I live at sixteen Garfield Ave, so I'm I'm, yeah, I. Seven or eight minute walk away probably, um but. My my do children, my two children do attend the daycare and we also frequent the library.
Excellent, thank you. I have a hand up here from Jean.
Good evening, everyone. Hi there, yeah, so Jean McGuire, I'm the director of the Maynard Public Library. And uh you know, the library's not ready to take an official position on this yet, I'm here to try to get informed. More uh than I already am and uh, so I I have a a few concerns. That I'd like to, you know, hear more about and does, I understand it maybe can't all necessarily be answered tonight. Uh, but don't feel a lot of confidence so far just based on what I've heard, um so. Couple of concerns, uh first concern is just for our patrons who are coming and for the significant percentage of patrons that we have right in our immediate neighborhood. Um, including Mary Jo's daycare and others and families that live in the area, so that the chemical issue is a big one for us, we have. Um, of course, so many people coming and going, we also do outdoor programs right on the patio, uh right in Memorial Park. Uh, so I really, really want the town to be very sure about what's happening uh with the environmental impact with chemicals. Um, the fact that things have happened when they weren't even supposed to be happening, definitely don't like the idea that. Neighbors should have to be calling the business to report problems, I mean, that's just not a good plan, uh not a good system in the way it should be. Um, another concern is the parking, um specifically just because we've had issues. Um, not just with this owner, but with the past owner of the business across Glendale. Uh, with parking in the library lot during open library hours, you know, there are signs posted in that lot that it's it's for library patrons only. And you know, have gotten really tired over time of having to call the police, to call people, to move their cars, um you know, we uh. Fill up that lot, you know, multiple times a week. Um, we lost four spaces and we're very happy to have E V charging, but we did lose four spaces to that, so it's gotten even tougher. Um, so I, sorry, but I am skeptical about whether employees would be parking. Down at the other lot instead of in the library lot, just because it's been such a a frequent issue over the years. Um, so I guess I would want a little clarification on that too. So yeah, looking looking for some more answers and some more confidence about this.
Appreciate it, Jean, thank you very much. Uh, Craig, you still have your hand up, is that active or is that an earlier question?
It it was a, there's a follow up question, yeah, um.
Before I get to you though, I just wanted to check on that cuz I was confused, I see uh Gray has his hand up.
Hello, good evening, everyone, uh happy to be able to participate. And I also have a child at Mary Jo's daycare, and I live at twelve Baske Avenue. On the, I guess it's the south side of the Great Road. Um, this is a very interesting dilemma for this board. It's wonderful to hear about a business that's seeking to grow, to thrive and prosper in Maynard and to. Support the local economy and offer jobs. I I think that the the test before you of, uh actually someone will have to correct them, it's. Escapes my mind at the moment, but the the notion of significant change to the neighborhood of by. But the the petitioner seeking this this change in in uh the special permit, sorry. I I think the the purpose of the request is to make a significant change. Developing more lines of business, you know, expanding the business into new activities. We've heard a lot of the particulars about uh safety concerns, environmental concerns and so forth. It seems like eh there's no actual way for this board to follow up. On concerns once a permit is granted for the change in the nature of this business. So a lot and and I think we've all seen this before where a business says one thing, gets a permit and then it starts. Doing a lot more of stuff that they kinda said they weren't quite gonna do.
So let me, let me interrupt just for a moment here, our our charter for this particular hearing. Is to determine if it is more detrimental than what is there now. Then we give our comments to the planning board, and the planning board writes the permit if they so desire. Once that permit is on the books, if there is, let's call it a violation of what the conditions of that permit are. Then there can be a cease and desist to the business. That's, that is my understanding of how this is gonna go forward as as a possible method, we present our findings. To the planning board and then they they have the heavy lift as to Bill, Bill or Brian, you can correct me if I'm screwing up here. But then, but that that's where the heavy lift is and they'll take our comments and put it. Into writing if they so desire, they find it that is reasonable to put this forward.
I appreciate that point of information, thank you very much, it clarifies things for me, and and I guess my my question for Joanna would be. Uh, how, how will you show the town? That you will, that this is a long list of items of concern to the neighborhood. And I think they are all potentially manageable through technology, operating procedure and so forth. In what way will you show the town and and demonstrate and and provide that confidence that this this. Board could make a positive finding for your business?
Uh, I guess I would obviously, you know, get my whole business together so they understand. Like what we're up against with the town, just because I see, I'm a, I'm a mother, I am a mother of an eleven year old daughter. I know what it's like to have people and businesses around that. Could harm the environment to, um, I'm from Bramingham, I'm on the south side and I have a bunch of businesses, so I'm dealing with. What you guys are talking about on a daily basis, but I'm also someone that is. Yeah, I give you my word when I say something, I know this, these are just words. But that's why I wanna hear your opinions, I wanna hear what you think, you know. Is a problem so I can change it. Like I heard several times, you guys did what you wanted to do and you were continue working. But we weren't working with customer cars, it was my employee's car. If we're not allowed to work on our car, like I understand that we can't work with the public cuz we don't have the rights to work with the public. I didn't think in, correct me if I'm wrong, if we're not allowed to work on our own cars, like our personal cars. Tell me and then I make sure that no one's working on their personal cars, we'll bring it to the body shop and they can do it for us. Or we'll work in their body shop who has the permits and do it that way for now. Cuz we've been stopped work for several months now and now we're losing money. Cuz we keep postponing this and not having an agreement of deny or um approval from the zoning board. Um, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I wanna do what you guys approve of, like. No, we're not gonna be spray painting, I, a lot of our stuff is from our old shop on powder mill. And my employee took it upon him and he knows. What, he knows what he's doing, but he was being not smart that day and he decides that he's just gonna spray, do the undercoating. So now you guys think we're gonna use the chemicals of undercoating in the spray gun. If that is not approved, cuz we didn't put it in the in the letter of what we are trying to do, we're not gonna do it, I'm. I, cuz I stopped it that day cuz I wasn't here, Mary Jo called me. I ended up having to drive all the way to Maynard just to make sure that everyone is not doing what they're not supposed to. And if you ask everyone in the shop, I am a stickler when it comes to doing the right thing for the business. And making sure everyone around us is safe and whatnot, my. And I'm going to be honest, my fear is if I'm not here, what these ones are gonna do, so I have eyes. I'm watching them constantly and they don't like it because I call them every second of the day to tell them to knock it off. But we're not gonna be using chemicals that are going to interfere with Mary Jo's bit daycare. Um, we, the sanding is gonna be closed doors and if we get approval, we're going to put the industrial. Vacuum in there so it sucks off the dust. The oil says we have, um, we do have something from the fire department that lets us. Um, have chemicals for the fire safety.
On on that thing with the fire department, they typically, when they issue a permit, they have some very specific issues. As to how much of what? Do you know what that permit is from the fire department?
I don't it off the top of my head, but I do have it and they've seen it and they've seen, um, the. The thing is, I have to call them again for Maynard because for Glendale, cuz what we have is for powder mill.
So you don't have a permit for this particular site?
Not right now cuz we're not doing anything with, like, we're not doing oil changes or anything with the chemicals right now, really, we're just. Changing tires on our personal vehicles or anything that is ours, we're not working with the public, we're not. Um, doing anything that we're not supposed to, other than our personal cars that we are working with. So we have to get the permit, um, or. I'm not sure if they can do a transfer because we have it for powder mill or they have to do it all over again.
It'll be a new permit per the site.
Alright, so then we'll get the new permit for the site, um, but we have all the. Fire extinguisher extinguishers that we are sup- are permitted like for each bay in. Where the feet that it's supposed to be and like how far up from the grounds, um. We have a vendor, I think he's from like Sunbury that comes out and does that and checks our fire extinguishers. Um, and with the fire department, they know how many barrels of oil that we have. Because that hasn't changed and how much in output of oil that we use.
What's the construction of the building, is it wood frame?
Um, no, the bottom half is cement.
No, no, not the floor, the walls.
Yeah, the bottom is, no, I don't believe it's wood, it, from the outside it looks all cement, upstairs, the second floor is wood.
Alright. So the the question that I have still lingering is hours of 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 working. You were talking about evening hours and daytime hours and stuff like that. Do you have any idea of what are the business hours that you're gonna consider for this site?
So we're considering about six thirty for the summertime, so from nine A M to six thirty summertime. And then during the fall, wintertime, it be until five, so nine to five. The weekends, um, we stop work around four or sooner.
On which day? Thank you. Mary Jo, I see your hand waving.
Yes, um, I have, I have, you know, you had said that you hadn't been in a residential area before and also that you had a bigger space and I. Feel as if what you're doing does need to be not in a residential area and with the bigger space, it doesn't seem like the appropriate location. To me, um, for 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 your needs, I, now I I wish you well for your business, but it just doesn't seem like the right place to me.
We moved here due to complications that are old property. And we had this property for since January of last year, but we didn't use it as anything till this past March. And to find another place for what we're trying to do now is extremely hard. We don't have thirty thousand dollars or more just to put down on a single building around no residential area. Um, and we're looking to. Help you guys as much as we can and to not be a no, to be bothering you. Um, or to make any um concerns for anything, uh. And it's, right now I'm at the point of. I don't know what you guys like, you guys sound like you just don't, you, I understand you don't want a different business and we're not trying. And I'm not trying to force anyone, but I'm kinda at like the end of the line where I don't know how else to help. Fix any of these problems, like, cuz I can't tell you right now what's gonna be at the end of the line in two months from now or um. Because we're doing everything we can. To make sure that the building is safe and that you guys are safe and we're not causing traffic and we're not taking up. Public parking spaces, even though it's only two parking spaces that we're taking in public parking lot, um, and.
Joanna, let let me pause you for a moment there, uh Craig has been very patient with his hand up. And he said he had a follow up question and I didn't let him get to it, so if if he paused for a moment. And and Craig, what what was your question?
Yeah, I mean, it was uh partially answered, I think, but um, just, you know, you mentioned again that the employee was was. Spraying the undercoating on his own car uh for the rust mitigation, I guess. Just curious, like, did he bring that equipment with him, like, why was that equipment on site if if he wasn't supposed to be using it and. Will that equipment be on site in the future and um I guess I'd be curious like if. If folks, if you or others know, like, I mean, are you, are you allowed to be doing private bodywork to cars? Um, a- at the moment, um, if you don't have a permit to do that, I just like, you know, it's just for the um employees. Um, but yeah, I I guess I'm just like, yeah, I mean, again, it's just, it's just, I mean, that that's honestly like, that's what's the concern to me, that there is a chemical smell. And enough that she felt like she needed to take my sons back inside and, you know, whatever got in their lungs is is now in their lungs and. Um, I just, I'm worried about that being a recurring issue, um, that I'd rather not have them experience, you know, as they've got young delicate lungs right now. Um, so again, yeah, if you can clarify. What what equipment is on site, what equipment will be on site um in regards to that?
So the equipment he was using is ours cuz we are previous body shop, we were on powder mill. But we ended up having to leave powder mill um for other reasons, so we obviously took everything that was ours and we brought it. They can't do like the whole entire car. That's usually what we were doing in powder mill. We were, um, prepping for like a whole car side, um, to paint. Um, and I feel like now that, since my employee had done this, and this is just kind of negatively impact my business that I'm trying to, um, create. We, we didn't mean any harm and of course, again, we've spoken to the employee. Um, and we're just trying to do everything that we can to correct these problems.
Alright, well, thank, thank you, Joanna. I see Jean with a, a question. And, and then I would like to go back to the board to see if there's any follow-up questions from the board.
Thank you. Uh, so I believe it was documented that there was an auto parts delivery to the business um, in May, on May thirtieth, and I just wonder what was that about? Um, you know, has there, I know supposedly it's just working on personal cars and how many personal cars the, the employees have, but, um, so, you know, what, what's going on with auto parts delivery to the business?
Most of the parts we end up bringing to the body shop that we're working. So i- if it's not our cars personally, we're, they get sent to our shop, but we deliver them to the, um, body shop that we're fixing our cars with. Because they have a permit to work with cars, so we bring our cars there.
Okay. Now, board members, any follow-up questions? John?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to follow up on, on a question that Danny brought up. Uh, are there underground storage tanks at the site? And if there aren't, if you did get the permit, is that something you'd be looking at in the future or we're not?
Are you asking for like the detail shop or? Sorry, I
I'm just wondering if there, there's already existing underground storage tanks for like oil and anything else at the site or small just?
No, we have two barrels that approved. Um, and then we have them picked up by, um, an FDA-approved vendor.
Alright, so there's to be no, no trucks coming to pump things out and everything?
No, 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 no.
Okay, alright, 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 I'm good.
Any other questions from the board? So I have a question and Brian or Bill, they're directed to you. We have a whole bunch of notes here from various people and we'd like to develop some findings based on all of these notes. Do we have to do it now or can we postpone this, continue this so we can write up our findings and then reconvene at a later date?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna let Bill go first because he's more intimate with your traditional process. I have thoughts, but I, I prefer to go second just because, uh, I'm sure you have a custom that's more familiar to you than it is to me.
Well, this one is a unique one because normally it's a yes or no on a special permit kind of thing. And here we're just developing findings. And I have my set of findings. I know Jerry would have a set, Paige would have a set. And we need to mesh those somehow. And if we do that tonight, we still have another case in front of us and it could be a rather long evening.
Um, well, in the past, uh, you're, you're right, Mr. Chair, uh, finding, the, 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 the charge of this board tonight is not to issue a permit or not issue a permit. The, the, it, the determination, the finding is to, uh, acknowledge the determinations made by the board and it's very important, uh, for the, um, to be consistent with the state law that, that we do make written findings. However, um, the purpose also is to, is to make a determination if the use is more detrimental than the previous approved use. Now, in this case, this is a, an approved use in a business district for a detailing shop. What has been described, in my opinion, falls outside of what would probably be found in a detail shop. However, that would be a zoning enforcement officer, uh, question. Um, so I, I would recommend if the board has specific findings that, um, they think are intricate and require, um, they'd feel better with that. We could certainly, uh, we could, we could continue the hearing to draw the findings up and, and have them reviewed prior. On the other hand, out of fairness to the applicant, if the findings are, um, if, if the board is inclined, that they feel that the findings are a detriment, it would only be fair to the applicant to say that, you know, we're going to memorialize the findings. However, um, based on what we have, there, there is a detriment as opposed to, you know, being the same. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that we're out of, um, I think it's, I think the applicant has indicated that, you know, this is a financial strain at this point and I can understand it and I appreciate that and I totally understand that. Um, however, I think it would be, uh, the applicant, this has been probably the third or fourth meeting. So I believe a level of closure would be appreciated if that's the board's.
My, my problem in just saying, okay, let's write down some findings, is I would like to deal with the grammar to make sure I say what I wanna say in a clear succinct way. Rather than saying, oh, I love her or no, I hate her, right? There's, there's, there's a gray zone in there. And I wanna make sure I articulate what at least my opinion is. And then I wanna get the other guy's opinions to make sure that we're together.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
Um, now that I've, I've, I've heard Bill's comments and, uh, uh, and understand, um, where you're both coming from. So your question, um, as I understand it, is a little bit more process-oriented. You know, how do we get from our fact-finding stage, which is what you just went through, into our deliberations where you don't know where the other board members are coming from? And you need to articulate certain findings and before you can make an ultimate decision. Uh, and so there's, you know, maybe two basic approaches to doing that. One is you can, uh, you know, kinda take a straw poll and discuss some proposed, you know, factual findings. And I'm not talking about conclusions, you know, an up or down vote on the merits. Uh, but so, just some of the sort of foundational factual findings based on the record that you've heard during the public hearing. So you can do that, you know, essentially through a straw poll. I realize it's eight thirty-five and you have another hearing, um, so that may be a little bit cumbersome for this evening. The other way to do it is for the board members to provide, um, information to, uh, you know, your staff and to me. And we do our best to consolidate those into sort of proposed, um, you know, findings of fact. And there, you know, there's gonna be some discord within that, right? You're not all gonna be coming from the same place. Um, and so we don't, you know, make any rulings. We don't say yes or no, but we take those issues and we articulate them in a, a sort of, uh, mock-up of factual findings. And then when you meet next, you get a chance to read each one of those and say, how does the board feel about this one? And then you do your straw poll and see if it gets voted up or down. And you'll see which way the board is, uh, is leaning. And, you know, of course, there's two stages here, right? And so the factual findings are gonna be the basis for your ultimate determination. And so once you get to that stage, whether it's through the straw poll or whether you give us the information and we start drafting something to bring back to you, that can be sort of the, um, the script, if you will, for that discussion, for your deliberations. Either way, once you get the factual findings, um, uh, uh, done, then you're gonna be in a position to know whether or not that supports a grant, uh, an approval or if it supports a denial. And then you can make your ultimate determination. So whichever way you wanna go, um, you know, there's, there's some direction that you can provide your staff and your other board members tonight, one way or another on that. And then we can move to the next stage.
Well, gives us some food for thought. My, my leaning here, and I, and I'm just the chair of this. And I need you guys to, to support me or shoot me down. But I would like to look at the second choice that Brian said. That we let Bill and whoever draft what we have for factuals and then come up with a conclusion. Um, if we wanna go a straw poll route, we can certainly start that and then let them develop the findings to go with it. So Jerry?
And, and may I, Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification. I, I hope this was implicit, but if not, let me say it explicitly. You would only send those things to your staff and to myself and not to each other.
Right, right.
But I hope you understood that, but I just wanted to make sure that was a hundred percent clear.
So, so each one of us would send it to you?
Correct, individually, and we would not, we would not identify, you know, where these things came from or who. We would consolidate them into a document that we brought back to you. And then you would deliberate what you must during the public, you know, meeting.
That would be the next, next iteration of our
That would be another night.
Yes. Jerry?
I agree with, with what was just stated. I, I, I think, I, I think there's a lot of issues that people have in their mind. Some are solid, some are not quite so solid in my view. Um, but I feel very comfortable with what I heard for questions from the public tonight. Uh, what I heard from answers, uh, from the, uh, the applicant this evening. Uh, I do have a few questions, but I would, I would, right now, if you wanted to do a straw poll on how we should move forward, I would move forward in the direction that Brian was just saying. Send it to Bill, send it to Brian, let them compile them, and we'll come back and then discuss them. That's my opinion.
So you don't want a straw poll on a yay or an A at this point?
No, no, I do not.
Okay, okay. John?
I second what Jerry just said.
Good. Leslie? Uh, you're, you're muted still, sorry.
Sorry, I agree.
Okay, Paige?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and where's the other guy? When, when, did I get everybody or, oh, I'm the other guy, right?
Yes, you are.
You know, these, these images on the screen keep jumping around. It's hard to keep track of people. So, alright, so, uh, let's do that. Um, I need a motion, I believe, to do that and then we'll have a motion to continue.
The mid, uh, the next meeting for the board, if the board, uh, continues, is scheduled for July twenty-second.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Um, okay. The July twenty-second, would it be at seven o'clock at night again?
Typically, yes.
Okay, just because the next day I have surgery and I don't know what I have to do at the night before to prepare for the surgery. So I don't wanna leave Mario to do it because he hasn't been to these meetings. He just come talks in and out to see what's going on. Um, and I don't wanna leave you guys hanging and I don't wanna like also miss it because it's been, what, almost four months now? Trying to come up with a decision and to be clarify as much as I possibly can. Um, I just don't know if you'd be able to do a, um, times earlier than seven. If not, I can do seven o'clock. I just don't know, um, how long the meeting would be. Like for my portion at least.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair and, and Bill, um, I guess two, two aspects of that. And I certainly respect the, the applicant's, uh, uh, needs. And, and the next hearing will not be as painful as the surgery, probably. Um, although how's it held by tonight? Uh, could we do our meeting one week earlier? Is, is that a possibility? Or could we make it at five PM instead of seven PM? Those are my two questions and I don't know, you know, functionally and legally, if we can do either of those.
We, we can set whatever day we wanna set.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing that I would, um, if, if the board decides on a different date, I'll just need a second to look up, make sure that we don't have a conflict with something else, another meeting.
Just to point out, the week before, I am, I'm away the week before.
Oh, that's no fun.
Same, yeah, me too.
Alright, so if that's that, then, so then maybe shifting the date may not be good. We may be getting a hard time to get a quorum. Uh, could we change the time to five PM?
Sure, I don't have a problem with that. Anybody else?
Could we do?
Could I propose doing it like two weeks early, it, just in, in, you know, does that? Obviously, I have some concern about this project, but I also definitely hear Joanna's concerns about the, you know, I think every month that you push this off the month that she's stuck paying the bills and not knowing what's gonna happen. So I, I guess I would just encourage you all to, you know, I very much appreciate spending time and hearing us all out. Um, but I think if, if you could have those findings compiled, you know, in the next week and then have you all yeah, I know, just, I think in the interest of, of fairness for the applicant, um, I would encourage.
I, I hear it, Greg, and that, that's a great comment. Uh, my concern is, uh, we're gonna put some pressure on Bill.
And Bill's not in the office until next week, but that doesn't mean, uh, we, we couldn't get, uh, things started on this. The, the other alternatives are, you know, uh, because it, if we went to the fifteenth, that would be a possibility. Monday, the fifteenth, I don't have any other board scheduled that day if the board was comfortable with that and that
I'm away that week, Bill.
Yeah, me too.
Alright.
If, if, I don't know if you guys do Wednesdays because that's, I guess, that's the twenty-fourth. Um, I mean, sorry, the twenty-sixth, I can do Wednesday, like
July Wednesday is the twenty-fourth.
My calendar moved. Um, I can yeah, I can do really any day or after the twenty-third.
Okay, after your surgery, you, you're, you're gonna be bright-eyed and butchered.
Why can't we do the twenty-ninth?
Say again, Leslie?
Why can't we do the twenty-ninth?
We could do the twenty, I could do the twenty.
Well, we wanna respect Joanna's issue of, of struggling for the business too. That's why we were trying to push it a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
So the hard thing with earlier right now is two of our members are not available the week of the fifteenth. Um, you got Fourth of July coming up. I don't know how that does or doesn't impact uh, anybody getting worked on. I, I don't know, doesn't impact me, but it may impact others.
It'll impact Bill because he's, he's still out spending money.
But hopefully he's gonna share his winnings when he comes home.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
So Joanna, you know, part of this is, is for you, you know, what works best for you to make sure this works? You're saying you can do the twenty-fourth?
I can do the twenty-fourth. Um, I can do earlier, but I don't wanna put pressure on you guys. I, I, like, I'm trying to work with you guys, but I also want to try to resolve everything as soon as possible, but if the twenty-fourth is good for everyone, I, I can wait until the twenty-fourth.
Does that work, guys?
Seven then?
Seven, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So twenty-fourth at seven PM, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting again.
Okay.
I will be at home. I will not be in the office, just so you guys know.
Alright, so I need a motion then to continue until the twenty-fourth, seven PM.
Alright, I, I make a motion to continue the case of six Glendale Street until July twenty-fourth at seven PM.
I get a second?
Second.
Jerry is seconding. Okay, so Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well. And in this time period between now and then, each one of us board members send our notes, our findings, or what we heard as findings to Bill. And Brian, do you wanna be on copy of that?
Um, I'm happy to be, um, so that Bill and I receive them together. But if you wanted to run through Bill and he can forward it to me, um, I'll follow your lead.
I, I don't think we all, I, I have your email, but I don't think we all do.
No, if you send it to me, if you send it to me, I'll compile them, um, and, and if, if you remember how we did on the, um, oh, I can't remember the address, but with the, uh, with the artist, um,
Summer Street.
Summer Street, right, yeah, with the, you know, do it like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you send me something, uh, similar with concerns, I can put it together, send it to Brian uh, and get it done pretty quick, but that would be the best way, I think, and the most efficient way. Sometimes people say the same thing, you know, we have, and we just consolidate it or whatever. Um, also, I would point out that, that, uh, one twenty-three Summer Street, right, yeah, was a good one to use because it addressed very similar issues. And, um, so that format was good and then the board can, uh, uh, send those along. And, uh, and then I'll go through, uh, Brian and, um, see what, how he wants to proceed, you know, from a
All right.
That's perfect.
So the result of this will be a document from the zoning board to the applicant and the planning board to take the next step with their their special permit requirements.
Well, not necessarily. If the board, if the board's findings, if the board finds that the use is more detrimental, that's the end of it. We would want to put the findings in there. And because the planning board then wouldn't have the power to act.
Just wanted to clarify that, Bill. Got to make it.
Right. So if the, like I'm saying, if the, I think that would help in having the findings so we can determine what they are and, you know, how they'd be mitigated would be the biggest help to Joanna and keep the process going.
Okay.
Terms negative, done.
All right.
Right. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just add to that a little bit. I mean, the board, as a board, will be seeing these things for the first time at the next meeting. And so while we're going to, you know, use our best good faith efforts to capture your intent, I imagine some of that will align and some of it won't. And so when you meet together as a board, you may say, okay, propose finding number six. How do we feel about that? And you may all disagree. And so that will dictate kind of what happens next in your process.
And that could be that we vote the findings individually.
Right. You could go down the list and say, number one, do we all agree? Yes, we do. Number two, the use will slash will not, you know, have the following, you know, impact. And you might read that and say, well, I don't agree with that statement. I think it will have such an impact. And if the board concurs with that, well, then you, we make that factual finding. And by the time you get to the end of it, you'll know if your facts support your conclusion. And then the decision will basically be written.
Great. Appreciate it. So that concludes this particular hearing for tonight. We do have another one. Is that applicant here?
I, I, I'm not sure if Ryan Clemens is the other applicant or that's the.
Bill, Ryan Clemens is an attorney from my office observing with me tonight. So I strongly suspect he is not representing your next applicant.
Okay, the next applicant I've been in touch with several times and I called and Gio, is anybody on for two, for one Powder Mill?
I don't see anybody other than the folks we've been talking with.
And I called and sent another, oh my goodness. They've been in contact with the the town. I mean, regularly, I don't, I don't understand why they wouldn't be here. And they were in the office. So I can only assume that something must have come up that was unforeseen.
Maybe it was the delay at the beginning, got confused.
No, I called them. I talked, I mean, I spoke to them. It could be, but I called them, I emailed them prior to the meeting, during the meeting.
Okay, so they should be up to date.
Yeah, I.
You call them now?
I just did. I just did.
Oh, just now, okay.
Yeah. And my suggestion would be, this, I can give the board a little background on it, but my suggestion would be, they're done everything to try to be consistent with what's going to be a little bit of, well, not for your end is fairly straightforward, but for the planning board, a little bit complicated process. But I think it would be appreciated. And I would, I don't know what could have happened, but if we could continue that to the twenty fourth, I can't imagine what would have happened.
Well, him not here speaking, and you saying that he was trying to get in, maybe he got struck by the lightning storm that we're having right now.
I had a hard time getting in.
I had a hard time getting in. And I'm running it.
So in that case, I think, you know, why don't we just postpone him till, continue it or whatever the phrase is to that next month?
And this is the BP station.
Yeah, they want to park some U-Haul trucks in their backyard.
Yeah.
I just lost my camera as well. I see it says I have to restart to get my camera. So you have, I hope you remember what I look like if it's me here.
Yeah, we do, Bill. You're okay.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I, like I said, I don't, can't imagine why.
All right. So somebody give me a motion to postpone. So we haven't opened it yet.
Oh, no, we didn't, did we? So let's continue the, just continue it to the.
We don't have to continue because we haven't opened it.
But if anybody came to hear the prod, the case, the, I think the appropriate motion would be to continue it so that anybody interested would know to come to the next meeting to hear the.
That means I have to open it.
I don't think you do. Am I right, Brian? Since I have Brian here.
So I would actually, so you can't continue a hearing that's not open technically. So I usually don't like elevating form over substance, but in this case, I'm going to break my own rule and just open it for the sole purpose of continuing it. Because without the applicant here, it's not really fair to take any evidence or have any discussion. So just open it for the sole purpose of continuing it to a date and time certain.
Okay. So the next public hearing is one Powder Mill Road, the BP Gas Station. We're going to hear the application filed by the business owner, Wu Si Chang, one Powder Mill Road, Maynard, subject property, one Powder Mill Road, existing BP Gas Station, located downtown mixed used overlay district with underlying zoning in the business district. Per sections three dot two dot three and ten dot two of the zoning bylaws, the applicant wants to seeks a special permit approval to allow overnight storage of more than one commercial vehicle not to exceed twenty five thousand gross vehicle weight U-Haul trucks at the subject property. And so that is the opening statement. And since he is not here, let's continue it till that date, which was what, the twenty fourth of July?
Yes. And, yeah, and Mr. Chair, I think with this particular project, if it's going to be that they're going to be at the planning board the ninth, perhaps you and I can meet prior to it because I'm going to meet with Brian and Chris briefly, and it might help coordinate some things so we don't switch, keep everything coordinated.
So that's confusing me because I thought when you and Planning Board Chair and I discussed this, we didn't think it was a planning board issue.
Well, that's true, but it has not been resolved. So I meant it would be good for you to be in the conversation. It's, 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 it's not, it shouldn't be confusing. It's just a question of, I'll touch base, let me rephrase it. I'll touch base with you prior to this.
Okay.
And just so you're in the loop and know what's going on.
All right. Now I'll explain it to everybody else. So I still need that motion to continue.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the case of number one Powder Mill Road until the July twenty fourth meeting of the ZBA.
Sounds good. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Brad? Is he still here? Yes. You're in favor? Paige?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That was unanimous by a super majority, everybody. There's one other motion in front of us. Somebody give it to me?
A motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second.
Jerry seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe if you're driving home. Still lightning over here.
Yeah.
I'm not driving anywhere. Yeah, Brian, I'll be in touch with you when I start getting these things. And I want to talk with this is what a crazy thing you didn't show up today. I think that the, there's a few things that we can make some progress on that'll be, that'll help. But and the other thing, while I have Paul on here, it's just the three of us. Let me stop the recording here.
So we're off the record.